Good morning. It's 10 o'clock by my calculator, by my iPad. I'm not, I don't have my computer with me today. Anyways, at this time, I call to order the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners Special Meeting for November 30th, 2023. I ask you to all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by myself. Please join me in saluting the most outstanding flag in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As always, I ask you to please silence your personal devices during the meeting so that we don't interrupt speakers. And at this time, it's very short agenda today. So just to let you know, we're joined in lieu of our Chief Deputy District Attorney, Doug Ritchie. We have our Deputy District Attorney, Kerry Rosser, sitting in. Welcome, Kerry. Good to see you. In addition to that, we have our Acting Assistant County Manager sitting in as our Acting County Manager today, Scott Morgan. Welcome. Our county manager is out for a couple of days on personal leave, taking a few vacation days. And we have Commissioner Rice is on vacation. This is one of those rare, rare opportunities during the year where we have three weeks between our second meeting of the month and our first meeting of the next month. So a lot of us take an opportunity to, to get out of town during that period of time. So anyways, Commissioner Rice is somewhere in the Caribbean, you know, acting as a pirate, I suppose, maybe. Anyways, and then also Commissioner Tarkanian had his, his son is having some surgery today, and so Commissioner Tarkanian is not joining us today. He may be joining us on Zoom, but I'm not confident that yet. So anyways, we do still have a quorum. Commissioner Hales is here and Commissioner Noasad is here and will be handling our timing machine today and of course, myself. So anyways, with that, time for public comment. I don't expect this meeting to last very long today. So anyways, I'll, public comment, I need to read this before we go into public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the Board Chairperson. Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin and then a yellow light which indicates that you have 30 seconds left and should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, we ask you to please sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on the administrative agenda item that we have today. We don't have any other items on the agenda except for that one item, and it's identified for possible action. So we'll take public comment at that time and also at closing public comment. So at this time, public comment will be taken on, taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners. Public comment. When you approach the podium, we ask you to please print your name so that we have it clearly into the record. State your name and your time will begin once you state your name.
Good morning. My name is Laura Searing. I live at 935 Fairway, and my husband and I bought this house in 2015. We're very happy there. I'm here to request your approval of the funding for the levee repair. We're bolstering near our house. I loved, used to love walking on the levee there, but I noticed last summer that it just all of a sudden disappeared. Where I used to walk, there is no longer a levee there. It used to be about 12 feet wide and now it's about that wide. And so here are my points. If that levee fails, the water will, in addition to impacting all the homes from where the breach is backwards, which would be south, also it will impact all the homes to the north on the west side of the levee. The road, which is Riverview, is one of the few roads out of the ranchos, and so that will be impacted. I think thousands of people travel on that road every day, so that, that's the nearest exit to 395, Highway 395 and the rest of the town. So that will be inaccessible. There's a possibility it may impact the water supply for all of GID and the ranchos because many of their wells are down there in the bottom, the bottom section of the river. And it will impact at least three businesses. The golf course, the country club restaurant, and the hair salon there. In addition, you know that there's going to be about 100 homes that would be impacted, and many of those homes are occupied by elders who are unable to get out and put any kind of sandbags or do any kind of flood mitigation. Our home was flooded in the 1990, what, six or eight flood? And I don't know how they worked on it afterwards, but we still smell the flood coming in under our house. So I know that a lot of homes were impacted, and I deeply appreciate your support in funding as well as considering funding for ongoing maintenance. Last year, last spring, the water, there was a pond next to our, next to the levee on this side, on our side of the levee because water had seeped through the levee, and apparently there's been no maintenance done on it. Thank you for considering our request.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Now, this is opening public comment, so the item that, that we just, the lady just offered public comment on is, is scheduled for the item. So is this general opening, opening public comment or is this related to the?
Public comment.
Is this related to the agenda item or not? It is. Why don't you wait until we get to that item? And we're not, we're not there yet. Not that it's going to make a whole lot of difference today because we don't have but one the item on the agendas, but.
Good morning, Douglas County. Jason Gibson with the Maladministration Audit Council for Douglas County and the Grand Jury Assembly here in Douglas County. As you know, we're behind on our notices and affidavits in our paperwork. We've been swamped with appeals and other pleadings and distractions. Of course, we have a grand reorganization remodel of the House of Gibson going on at the same time. So nevertheless, we've been building out the infrastructure here in Douglas County with over 30 websites and the flagship site, which will be Audit Douglas County Nevada, Nevada, which is root word Spanish for Nevada, the Spanish were here first, honky cat, along with the waschishu. So at Douglas County Nevada Audit flagship website, you'll find the recent news on state of Nevada versus the House of Gibson and the right to travel. And within this document, on October 30th, 2023, the Ninth Judicial District Court in and for Douglas County concluded that structural error occurred requiring the judgment of conviction be reversed. In a most embarrassing display of reckless belligerence and amateur representation, District Court Judge Nathan Todd Young's ruling coincided with a statement on record that the arrest and the prosecution of defendant Jason G. Gibson for his participation in the Board of County Commissioner meetings was sloppy at best. The judge implied that the state was negligent in handling the matter and went as far as to champion the case and argue on behalf of the defendant, yours truly. On or around March 10th, I think it was, I was arrested in my private driveway in the ranchos attempting to attend the Board of County Commissioner meeting in Minden. I was originally cited with four criminal misdemeanors which originated with the allegation that I was obstructing a peace officer and resisting arrest. I was charged with the allegation of driving without registration, license, or insurance. My vehicle was illegally searched, seized, and towed. During the course of the arrest, DCSO officers used excessive force and placed me into handcuffs which cut my wrist. I was booked into the Douglas County Justice Administrative Law Enforcement Center, JALIC, and denied the right to contact counsel or family, friends, and neighbors. Although there was no magistrate order to find probable cause and despite a written order by Judge Stephen McMorris to have me released the same day of my arrest, Dan Coverley and his business partners chose, along with Under Sheriff Ron Elges and Chairman Mark Gardner, held Gibson in solitary confinement. I was arraigned and released after 48 hours even though there was no probable cause and that Stephen Morris, McMorris signed an order to have me released.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Additional public comment? Okay, sensing no additional public comment, bring it back to the board. Contrary to what Mr. Gibson indicates, I think it's important that the public understand that I have no jurisdiction of the Sheriff's Department and, and no enforcement processes. So thank you. Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Noasad, seconded by Commissioner Hales to approve the proposed agenda as presented. Sensing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. We'll go into the administrative agenda. I'll read that into the item. We'll have our presentation and then, and then we'll have questions for possible action discussion to, one, approve the Doug Carson Valley Conservation District's funding request in the amount of $102,000 with a contingency allowance for an additional $30,000 for emergency flood damage repair to a Carson River levee and riverbank, and authorize the county manager to sign the inter-local funding agreement and approve contingency requests up to $30,000 allowance. And two, approve the use of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, ARPA funds to cover up to $95,000 of the total $132,000. And three, waive the Douglas County Flood Plane Development Permit Fee of approximately $300 being presented by our flood manager, Courtney Walker, joined by our Public Works Director, Mr. Phil Richter. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Courtney Walker, for the record. I know there's been a bit of discussion regarding this levee. I was contacted by a few different residents over in the summer. I didn't know much about it, honestly, when it was first brought to my attention because I, I didn't, I didn't recognize it as a county asset. However, I started looking into it and doing some research in regards to the levee, and it turns out it has been there for several years, maybe 150, going back to old Record Courier articles. You can find reference of it back to the late 1800s. So it's been there for quite a while. This is not the first time that it's been compromised. It has failed in the past and also has needed maintenance and things like that. And so that's what we're here to discuss today. We are working with the Carson Valley Conservation District. They're the lead agency on this project. We coordinate with them on several bank stabilization projects throughout the county as well on the Carson River. They have a lot of expertise in river projects, and they also have the ability to perform work on private property. So they are the lead agency, and they have come to us with some engineering plans and a general cost estimate for the project. And there's a bunch of different agencies that are participating in helping to fund this repair. And so the total is about $260,000 that they're anticipating, although we want to have $30,000 additional contingency. As we all know, construction projects tend to go over in this day and age. So there, there's a couple of different agencies participating in this effort. The Nevada Division of Water Resources is one. They're, they're contributing 65. The Carson Water Subconservancy District is contributing $93,000. And the Carson Truckee Water Conservancy District will be providing $37,000 funding to Douglas County. And so the remaining funds are proposed to come from the ARPA funding. The Conservation District is here and able to answer any questions you might have related to the construction itself. I've been told it would take about two weeks to do it, and if approved here today, they can start the work relatively soon. So if there's any questions in regards to that, I do have Richard Wilkinson here from the Carson Valley Conservation District to answer any questions related to that. But with that, we'll take any questions that you might have. Oh yeah, I am going to go through my slide.
I was just wondering if you're going to go through the individuals.
Yeah, thanks. I was like, oh, I told you everything you need to know.
I didn't bring my computer today because I figured you'd be doing that.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Sorry, it's a lot of pressure, you know? A personal meeting just for me, it's really, really a lot going on. So to orient you, oh yes, I thought I did already. Okay, perfect. Okay. So to orient you, we have Highway 395 here, Riverview Drive, as it climbs up the hill past the Carson Valley Golf Course is right here. We have Carson Valley Medical Center is, is around up here in this area. And so the levee is right here in this circled area, and where it is compromised is actually on the west side of the river. This slide here just shows here in 2021, this is the levee before it was compromised. And then, as we all know, last spring, we had sustained high flows for a long time. We never had a big 1997 type of event, but we did have higher flows, higher than normal. It was probably about low flood stage for several months, and that is what we are assuming is what compromised this portion of the levee. And so this amount of area is pretty much, has been compromised, and it's not there anymore. And so the, the levee is a much more narrow protection than it was prior to this year.
Just Phil Richter, go back. Phil Richter, Director of Public Works for the record. If you go back one slide. So that area, just, just so everyone's clear, that area in green that you're looking at there, in the 2021 slide, that is essentially entire, that is land. That is not land, that is not, not the river. In, in June of 2023, that same green area is now a river. Just, just so you're aware, that's, that's sort of the estimate, engineering estimate or profile of the amount of, of land that was, was degraded or washed away from the, from the flooding.
Courtney Walker, for the record, here are just a few photos showing the steep cut bank. This, we'll go to the plans kind of towards the end of the slides here, but this is supposed to be more of a slope, a two to one slope. And right now, it's, it's pretty much vertical, and that's caused by the river moving over in that direction and causing the erosion.
This is looking south?
This is looking west. I would say this one, yes, this one is looking south.
Yeah, that one's looking south, right? Okay. Okay. So this is the west bank?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, and the golf course is basically on the other side of that?
Right, yeah. So this photo here
Right, okay.
Shows the golf course and then some homes that are in the vicinity of it. And the adjacent ground here is about the same level as the current river bottom. There's just another photo looking to the southwest.
So the, as I would gather, and I'm certainly not an engineer, but I, I would imagine we're right now probably at the lowest the river's going to be probably for the season. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, that's correct.
Because I know when I was out there, you know, back in June, the, the river was quite, quite a bit higher. So even trying to repair the river at that time was probably not possible.
Here's the proposed plan set that the Conservation District was able to get together for us. This area right here is where the levee repairs would occur. And then they're also, they've got a couple borrow areas. If you've been out to the site, there's several areas of deposit as well as erosion, and so they're going to use some of the material that's within the river here and then import riprap for the stabilization piece of it.
You know, you, you guys, I don't, I don't mean that in a derogatory manner. Your department has a, a tendency to use riprap as a com, very common term. It's very common in your business. However, it's not common to the, to the layperson in our county, and I didn't even realize what it meant. Can you explain what riprap is?
Yes, it's larger angular rock, and so when you place it onto a surface, you're able to kind of interlock the blocks. And so it causes them to stay in place and to really protect the soil behind it, even when you have pressure from water and things like that coming through it. Just to show you one more aerial, this here is the existing portion of the levee that did not erode. You can see all the deposit here, and the river kind of turned here. This is looking more to the northwest. And so as the river migrated in this direction, as it's trying to flow more towards the west, and that's a common practice, rivers tend to move. It's very natural for them to do that in a setting where you don't have development or roads or bridges or houses or things like that. The river is able to move and change its path freely, but once we put certain infrastructure in the way, it makes it a little more challenging when it does that. And so it is trying to migrate here more to the west, and it found the weak point here in the levee, and this is where it started to erode this spring. So essentially, this area here is pretty much what it will look like once the repairs are completed. But this right here is identified on the plans as a borrow area as well as this, and so I'll go back really quick to that. So you can see these areas in pink are the borrow areas, and you can see them pretty quickly here. Those are all the slides that I had prepared. Thanks for reminding me to go through them.
So is the desire here to, on this, on this slide, the, the soil that's on the, on the right side to the east, do we expect to trench that back out so that we can get the river to, to do a natural flow better and, and not be so concentrated onto that bank?
Yes.
So I guess we have the developer, the individual here that is going to possibly be doing this?
Sure, yeah, and they, they will be doing some excavation there as well to de-water the area so that you don't have water in the construction area, but I'll let Rich speak to the details of that.
Rich Wilkinson, I'm the coordinator for Carson Valley Conservation District, and you're, you're, you're spot on with what, what you're thinking there. We, we're going to do more than just stabilize that bank because we, we've noticed that there's a lot of issues on the west side of the bank, which is causing the river, the river. Oh yeah, it's causing the river to head directly to the west, which is a, just a 90-degree shot right into the levee and the bank there. So with this project, we plan on doing some work upstream and downstream of this to make it, I guess it'd be take the energy away from the channel and, and direct our flows where we want them. I want to point out that the Conservation District has a large grant that we're putting in for in the future to do channel clearing and snagging and maintenance in this location. I'm sure some of the folks in this room have already made this observation, but with those fires we had in Alpine County and then all this heavy wet snow and moisture, we saw a lot of large woody debris and just huge amounts of sand and gravel come into this location. So this, this would take care of the immediate threat, but we do plan on doing some more larger scale work in there in the future.
I, I have to disclose that as I, I sit on the Carson Water Subconservancy District Board as well, as Commissioner Hales does as well. We went through this presentation actually much more elaborate than even, even what we're seeing today at our meeting last month when they dedicated, what was it, 90, 95? Huh? Somewhere in that neighborhood?
93.
93, yeah. So I was very appreciative of the fact that that board approved the buy-in on this, also recognizing the damage or potential threat to us, especially as we are entering the winter season here. So anyways, so I was very happy to, very happy to see that occur. So anyways. Commissioners, any other questions, comments, observations? Staff or the potential? Okay. No?
Thank you.
Otherwise, we can go into public comment.
I do have a question. But first to preface, which is, in my mind, what we have to do is distinguish why this stormwater concern takes our immediate resources instead of other storm, other of the many stormwater concerns we have. And the other question we have to ask is, why is this a county responsibility and not a private property owner responsibility? So I, I wanted to answer those two questions before I voted today, and so I asked Courtney to show me the area so I could fully understand, and it was very enlightening to walk that area. I think the pictures are really good, but you still don't get the sense of how, how thin that area is between, of, of the remaining levee, how thin that strip of levee is that's left. So, so I had a lot of questions logistically and, you know, and I appreciate Courtney just at the drop of a hat being ready to go out there with me and show me that area and explain a lot of things. So many of my questions have been answered, but I want to ask Courtney if she wants to, I guess I should say Ms. Walker, sorry about that, if, if she wants to address those two
Sure, thank you. Courtney Walker, for the record, I would say this issue is pretty critical, rises to the top at the moment because of the imminent property damage that will occur if it's not addressed. And you are correct, it is not a county asset necessarily. And so I would say that it's not being a county project, but we're, we're offering to help participate in the cost of it. And that kind of follows historical practices from the research that I've done. Nothing, no one has necessarily claimed ownership over this. And so I think it's appropriate for us to participate with the other agencies to help restoring it. However, it is a conversation that's going to have to happen in the future going forward as far as who is responsible because it does directly benefit specific homeowners, and it, it doesn't seem unreasonable that in the future they should participate in the maintenance of this asset that directly benefits them.
Any other questions? Commissioner Noasad? No? So with that, we'll go to public comment? Yes? Commissioners, you ready? Okay. Okay. So at this time, we'll take public comment on item, item number one, the only, so.
Good morning. My name is Kerry Olson. I live on Neblich Lane. I'm here to support the, the project, the levee repair. I did go through the last one in 97, and, you know, we got through it okay, and, and I, I just think that some of it's not, maybe a through it okay. And, and I, I just think that some, it's not maybe a county responsibility, but things have changed a lot over the last 30 years. River View now is, I would say, one of the main arteries for vehicle traffic in the valley. If that gets closed down for even a couple weeks, that could be a major traffic hangup in that area. I think, I think the sooner the better that it just gets done. Historically, New Year's, right around New Year's has been a typical time when that area has flooded or it's getting close to flooding. I mean, we've, we've, I've bagged several times, you know, right, right around that time. So it's, it's getting close. And I think it's something serious to think about. You know, and so not only is it a, I know we have the choice to where we live, but you know, this was approved, probably one of the older subdivisions in the valley. I would say probably a good 60 years or so. But, so I do feel the county has some responsibility to protect that area, even though it is in a flood zone. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment on item number one?
Jason Gibson, Rancho resident for 40 years. I'll take the opportunity to point out that the $8 million that were mal-administered by the American Rescue Plan Act Fund is supposed to be reserved for projects such as these. Instead, your Board of County Commissioners spent that money without a plan on everything but American Rescue. They funded municipal projects, utilities, gave raises to corporate subject citizens, and basically, we've got maybe 775,000 left out of $8 million. And Commissioners Hale and Gardner, they're in tandem when it comes to essentially ignoring the needs of the taxpayers who fund this county during the COVID plandemic. Taxpayers didn't receive any American Rescue Plan Act funds. We didn't get a tax break. We didn't get any extra incentives of small business entrepreneurs. We didn't get anything from the state, didn't get anything from the county. It all went into the coffers of Douglas County Public Servants and their bogus capital investments and excessive technological budget requests. Furthermore, when they were blowing that levee with dynamite, that was Douglas County Sheriff, over the course, I think, of the summer, they had the whole neighborhood worked up. They didn't bother to tell any of us. They were just using high-powered explosives that we could feel all the way on Langley Drive there. So we called in to find out why they didn't inform us of these things. And we looked on the website. There was no pre-notice whatsoever. That was around the same time that they launched their campaign to squeeze us for their salary increases using explosives, using tactics online to scare us into compliance, like the missing body on April 1st that they were training out in the desert to find, basically spooking everybody thinking that there was some kind of murder, which there wasn't. And we've seen it before. We've seen these kinds of tactics used by law enforcement to get what they want. And it's right around the negotiation time when they're using these PR tactics online and using their wives and their relatives to essentially challenge the general public into making a move and giving them the highest raise in the, in the state of Nevada and compensating them excessively for a whole lot of nothing. Now, I got family in law enforcement. We're not anti-law enforcement, but we see you, we know who you are. And there's a lot of you who are masquerading as peace officers, and we're coming for your badge and your, and your bond.
Additional public comment? We reserve three minutes for everybody to speak on a subject. And unfortunately, you took your three minutes during opening public comment. So anyways, okay. Otherwise, I would have to grant other people additional time. So thank you. I, I didn't want to interrupt you earlier. Okay. So anyways, okay. Since there's no other public comment, we're going to bring it back to the board. I, I did have an indication or a, anyways, I had some thoughts. And I do, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name earlier.
Laura.
Laura. Okay. I should remember that. That's my wife's name. But anyways, you articulated exactly what I wanted to articulate in regards to the need of, of this particular repair. Okay. So it didn't go unnoticed because you were reading off my notes. But it does, even though that may not be a public county asset, it does protect county assets. And I am concerned about the, the, you know, we got into a discussion when we were discussing this at the Carson Water Subconservancy District meeting a couple of weeks ago about whether or not it's an emergency, an impending emergency, a previous emergency. Regardless of the term you want to put in front of our emergency, we're entering into a, the, the most dangerous time of our season in Douglas County in potential flood possibilities that we recognized last year to, to our disadvantage. And every time we have these kinds of incidences, we threaten public infrastructure, especially our roads. So the fact that we have businesses there, I don't, you know, I don't know that that's our responsibility, but certainly the artery going into and out of the ranchos in River View Drive is extremely important in the potential of, of damaging that infrastructure. So, and, and also has been identified also is that I believe the ranchos have two or three and maybe four pumping stations, drowned water pumping stations in that area, in that low-lying area as well, which could be threatened as well. And so I see the health and safety of our public being in jeopardy if we don't do this. And now is the time to do it. I don't know that we can delay waiting any longer for this. I was very concerned about the, the impending storms that we might have experienced a couple of weeks ago and whether or not that's going to swell the river. So I just, I, I saw this as an important aspect. I am very pleased, actually, that, that Carson Water Subconservancy, the, the Nevada Department of Water Resources and, and other entities have, have recognized this as well and are joining us in this effort. So I am certainly encouraging my fellow commissioners to vote in a positive manner on this. So any other comments? Commissioner Hales?
I agree with what you've said. I also want to, and what Ms. Walker explained, why this project is different than others that are also compelling, but not as imminent. So, so the imminent damage is important, the fact that there are county assets also at risk, the fact that there are other participating entities and a lot of money coming from other sources. These, also that there's a large number of homes. And to me, it's important that there are no legal documents allocating responsibility to private parties. That distinguishes this situation from another one we've heard frequently this year. So also, the, the fact that in the future, well, we, we have a stormwater master plan in the works. And we'll be able to look and say, in the future, how do we allocate expenses such as this one in a way that's more thoughtful, more pre-planned. So for all of these reasons, I'm in support of this. And, and I think it's definitely distinguishable from other needy stormwater projects.
I think I've said this before, if we don't learn the lessons of history, we're bound to repeat them. In 1997, there was a flood. In 2007, there was a flood. In this last spring, there was a flood. Now, knowing that, that is going to happen, period. So what I'd like to do is what you alluded to in terms of what the responsibility was of the homeowner, they had no responsibility. However, the county, the county needs to be able to do a crystal ball kind of thing and say, is this a safe place to put houses? Are they eventually going to get flooded? And that isn't being done. And it hasn't been being done for the last 25 years, as far as I know. So we need to do something very, very specific to our community development. We got to take that into consideration. That's just my, my take on this. As far as getting the, getting the levee built, it's got to be done.
Thank you, Commissioner Noah Sat. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Carson Valley Conservation District's funding request in the amount of $102,000 with a contingency allowance for an additional $30,000 for emergency flood damage repair to a Carson River levee. Sorry, I usually work off of my, okay, levee and riverbank, and authorize the county manager to sign the interlocal funding agreement and approve contingency requests up to the $30,000 allowance, approve the use of ARPA funds to cover up to $95,000 of the total $132,000, and waive the Douglas County Flood Plain Development Permit Fee of approximately $300.
Now, before I second this motion, I have a question. How long is it going to take to build this levee?
Phil Richard, Director of Public Works, for the record. The estimate from the Carson Valley Conservation District, who's the lead, who's the lead agency on this, is two to three weeks.
Thank you.
Are you going to second the?
My second motion.
Okay. Okay. So motion by Commissioner Hale, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sat to approve this agenda item as written. And I would indicate that because we only have three commissioners in attendance today, it's going to require a positive vote by all three commissioners, because we still require a quorum to do that. So anyways, all those in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes three to zero. Right? Three to zero. Well, I, I guess I could call, is there any opposition? But I don't think that there's any commissioners to oppose it. So anyways, okay. Motion passes. Thank you very much. And hopefully, we can get this work started post haste, right? Before we enter into our impending storm season. So Commissioner Hales, you added something additionally?
Yeah. I just want to thank Ms. Walker for her really good work on this. I think those pictures and the presentation were helpful in being willing to just go with me at the drop of a hat to see the place and just really appreciate your excellent work and collaborating with the other entities. Well done.
I would encourage the commissioners also to take a look at the presentation to Carson Water Subconservancy District. It showed a video of the, of the waters back in June that were, were really approaching. And, and, and going over the, there's a concrete system in that between the banks also. And when I was out there with our Sheriff's Department in June, I, I was amazed at the amount of water that was encroaching upon this area. So I'm glad that we have been able to join our, our fellow agencies in this regard. So thank you very much. And thank you for your presentation. And let's get to work. Yeah. So something for, more for you to do. Okay. With that, that's the only item on the agenda today. So we'll go into closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners or those agenda items where public comment has not already been taken.
Jason Gibson, First Attorney Private General for Douglas County, back to this order that was signed on October 30th by Judge Todd Nathan Young, which reverses and remands the conviction of yours truly based on a sting operation that was orchestrated by Chairman Mark Gardner. He insists that he doesn't have jurisdiction, which he doesn't, but he uses his influences and his sour sense of humor to compel false authority in doing his bidding. The motion was set after an argument that occurred between Gardner and I the day before I was arrested. There were at least four law enforcement patrol cars dispatched to my neighborhood and a drone. These are high-speed drones. They frequent the house on occasion. We know that is tied into the municipal governance of Douglas County. Gardner vehemently opposes the freedom of speech, due process, and works to censor, molest, and delete public comment from both the YouTube channel, from the Zoom utility, which allows us to call in from remote distances. And he's out in left field with his fiduciary responsibilities and has exposed the people of Douglas County to great harm's way. It's of keen interest to note that the judge reversed Gibson's conviction based on a series of maladministrative errors, practices, and routine procedures which were devoid of the actual facts and merits of my case. District Attorney Mark Jackson, Judges Paul Gilbert, Stephen McMorris, and DCSO Dan Coverley and crew threw the book at Gibson over the course of seven months, deploying at least 30 agents from five agencies to jail Gibson to no avail. They even went as far as to auction my family vehicle without authorized authority to do so and steal personal property from my vehicle, including my house keys and personal effects. The stakeholders, shareholders, and contractors and employees doing business at the Judicial Administrative Law Enforcement Center in Douglas County, aka Jalek Enterprise, intend to expand their criminal franchise at the expense of taxpayers by means of constructing a new campus, aka Cop City, at the cost of $110 to $130 million. This is the highest capital investment racketeering scheme in the history of Douglas County. Notice to agent, you and your business partners doing business as Douglas County, in and for County of Douglas, are knowingly, intentionally, and willingly inflating the value of capital investments and government services to the detriment of constituent citizens in Douglas County. Your belligerent representation compromises our peace and security. Placing we, the people, in harm's way, your deficit spending model is reckless and belligerent, driving the cost of living so high that many of us who were raised here will be forced to relocate due to government taxation schemes, crime, and the ensuing high overhead, which can only result in a total.
Additional public comment?
I want to thank the commission for, oh, Laura Searing. I want to thank the commission and Ms. Walker and the other agencies for, well, thank you for voting. Yes, I appreciate that. Last, was it May or June, when the river was about to breach? It got that far from the top of the levee before the explosion was done to release some of the log jam there at the bridge and, or the dam or whatever it is. And boy, the emergency response team did such a great job. We were really pleased with all their work and how much they did. And so anyway, thank you so much on behalf of the other homeowners who I have to think don't know about the possible danger, or they would be here in droves. Thank you very much for your votes.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? It is refreshing to have positive comments made at the board. So I don't want to have that go unrecognized. Thank you very much, Mr. Searing. Okay. With that, public comment is, is, well, I, I have some announcements I want to make, so I'll make them during public comment. First of all, the activities this weekend, and this is primarily to, to the members that are on Facebook or on, on our YouTube this weekend. We have a lot of are on Facebook or on our YouTube, this weekend, we have a lot of activities going on in our community. Tonight, we have the lighting of the gazebo at the Town of Gardinerville Heritage Park. I think that starts around 5:30. So I would encourage the members of our community to go out and do that. And they have some hot apple cider and some strudel and some other stuff that they have available. Yes. Okay? And dress warmly, because it's supposed to be cold. Last year, I know it rained, but hopefully, this year, we'll avoid the wetness. Tomorrow night, well, also tonight is also, for those of you in the public that do not know it, our, we have a, signed a contract for a professional hockey team to be playing at the Tahoe Blue Center, and the revealing of the name is going to be tonight at that event center. So I believe that starts around 4:30, if I'm not mistaken. So I encourage you who are not going to the Town of Gardinerville's lighting tonight to possibly dip your head in there. Tomorrow night, we have the lighting of the gazebo at the Mendon Town Park. So that's going to go on tomorrow night. Saturday night, we have the Chamber of Commerce Parade of Lights. So a lot of activities and a lot of fun holiday activities for the community to participate in. So I'm going to try to make it out at least to the three down here. Obviously, there's a conflict tonight between the naming of the professional hockey team and the Town of Gardinerville. But other than that, other commissioners? And I love your holiday tie, Mr. Noasad?
Where's my socks?
Well, I don't want to look there. It's, thank you. Okay. With that, closing public comment is over, and pending no other business, the meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you very much for your attendance.